Order it's five o'clock. Is roll club been taken?
Yes, it has.
All right.
Can everyone please make sure your microphones are on?
All right.
We are going to kick this off with a presentation and Paul Selke is going to lead that and I will join in shortly.
Hello, my name is Paul Selke. I'm with AKS Engineering Forestry. We're like, we're located out of Walton. So Esther kind of reached out to me a while back to kind of help out with this and so kind of give us some feedback. So our presentation here, there's a lot to it. So I definitely encourage if you guys have questions as we go through the presentation, you know, feel free to stop me and say, ask the question because I feel like if we wait till the end, we're not going to be able to, you know, it's going to be hard to remember things like that. So obviously we're here to talk tonight a little about what you're grading excavating and erosion control, your kind of code update. So so next slide please. So a quick and dirty kind of an outline. Obviously, we're going to kind of talk about summary of why we're here and why we're doing these current steps, kind of overview of the current codes and kind of permitting process and then kind of give you a concept of what we're thinking for, you know, grading and permit process and then screen disappeared. And we obviously have some recommended code updates that basically have kind of been brought forward. And then obviously we'll have the final list of questions, but you know, do not take that as basically you have to hold your questions till the end. So next slide please. But this, I'll kind of turn it over to Esther because she kind of started this project off. So.
Yeah, so I'm the why how we got here. So way back in 2020, 2021, the city started receiving complaints and the planning commission actually had before them some what I call frequent flyers or offenders. I was looking back in 2021 and there was one in particular that one meeting, there were two people who had brought in fill. One had gotten a permit for 250 yards, brought in 600 yards and then didn't understand why they were before the planning commission to explain why they didn't, why they had to stop work order, et cetera. Out of those frequent flyers and complaints triggered a work session in September 14th of 2021. I think at that time, the commission thought they had given enough direction to staff, but I can tell from the minutes, staff just lacked the understanding of where to go next. And then it kind of just faltered at that point. So then in the next year in 20, December 27th of 2022, Jay Blake brought forward some review of the grading and erosion plans and made some recommendations that were not yet adopted. So there was a work session followed by a commission discussion, followed by a moratorium discussion the following year, which was September 26, 2023. The moratorium was not enacted. And then the next year, August 27th, 2024, we brought it back for an ordinance. But at that time, I think part of the issue was the commission was like, we thought we'd already put this in into motion. And also, we're not sure this is where we want it yet. I think some of the key takeaways, there were some discussion about removal of stockpiling from the code. And then also there were some concerns about, is this enough? And also, is it easy for the community to understand? So there were a lot of moving parts with this. It is very complicated. I don't fault staff in the past for getting a little lost in the weeds on this. And you will note, there is a an original report from, I think it was Crest kind of did a review. Some of those recommendations were based on the time at the of the planning director wanting to kind of take this over. So they suggested moving it to the community development area. I'm respectfully requesting we don't do that in the current iteration because I want it to be under building official or designee because I would like to figure out the best solution for that within our departments. I will select that right away, but I want that in the ordinance in a way that it can be in the best department that is necessary. At the time, it was specific to that one staff person kind of wanting to take it over. And I don't want it to be specific to one staff person. So that was in August 27th, 2024. There was discussion of the ordinance. We did not have an engineer in the room at the time. And honestly, I think at that time, it should have been a work session and unfortunately it wasn't. And so staff and the commission were not in alignment at the time. And I said, let's pause, let's get an engineer back to the meeting and let's further do this. And I want to do this right. So that is where we're at now. That's where we arrived today of bringing AKS into the room, reviewing again, some of the options, some of the takeaways. We've said, we know there's significant areas where too much fill has been brought in. And we also know some of these frequent flyers have been doing this kind of under the level of what's accepted. So they've been just under what's required for a permit, but they've been doing it multiple times. And so part of what we're looking at tonight, you'll see is we are going to track that repeated permitting process, if you will. So even if it's a low threshold, we'll be tracking that that low threshold is being done multiple times. So the cumulative damage, as I like to call it, making sure they're not impacting others because those original things that came before the planning commission, what had started as a small permit for 250 yards, then was turning into stormwater issues and erosion control and flooding the neighbors. And that's, that's why we've arrived here.
So I think we're the next slide. I think so. Obviously, this is kind of wrapping up some of Esther where basically she kind of coordinated some meetings there. Obviously, she mentioned the.
Excuse me, could you? I'm hard herring.
I'm right there with you. So, yep. Sorry. So yeah, so essentially this kind of wraps up what Esther was talking about where she kind of the code was presented the city in 24. And then obviously we've been kind of coordinating back and forth since that time. So next slide please. So the way I kind of, you know, I'm an engineer, I'm basically a civil engineer, a geotech engineer. So I think look from engineering perspectives, Crest report. If you read that report, I think it was including the packet, it was much more of a code analysis and kind of a code comparison, looking at, okay, what do other cities do? What are other codes do? Things like that. And so there you can see their goals. They're, they're basically trying to make it easy to administer, very clear, consistent is what their goal was with their report. So next slide, essentially their recommendations that they came out of their goals, they were kind of geared off those three goals to make it clear and concise and basically make it easy to administer. So it's a very kind of, it's from a looking from almost a planning perspective. Whereas AKS, we were brought in more, looking more from a engineering kind of practical, real world application perspective. So we can talk, if there's any questions on the crest report, or if you have any thoughts or ideas, we can talk about that, or we can move on to kind of the AKS approach.
I have a question about goal number one. I was a little confused. So the first box is required that all grading permit applications are approved. And then the third box is required that all grading applications are reviewed. Aren't those the same thing? Like if you, if a building official is reviewing it, aren't they also approving it or not?
Yeah.
So I wasn't sure what the distinction was and why that was there.
My, my, you know, understanding is the first ones, obviously it's community development director. So basically you're talking planning, whereas the third one is creating applications that go to the building department. So you got the building official that basically is going to weigh in at that point. So they're basically bringing both officials in between those two different, that's my.
To be clear, this is, this is the crest report. This isn't what's actually enacted.
Yeah, this is an old report and the difference was back then was there was a lower threshold they were saying was going to the planning and the higher threshold was going to the building. We're not necessarily keeping the same. So that's the difference between the two. They were, they were requesting that it be moved to planning for the lower threshold, but that stay with building officials for the building and higher. And those were the two recommendations, again, from a planning perspective.
So we're deviating from this.
We didn't adopt this. This is just recommendation.
That was a recommendation at that time.
But we're not following this recommendation.
Not fully, not fully. Yeah. There's, there's some things we pulled out of that, but that is in what.
Well, no, I'm just wondering because if we pay in, if we pay someone to put a report together for us, why would we not follow?
Well, to be, to be frank, the commission never really actually approved that. It was something that was done under staff. Two, staff never presented that to the commission at the time when it was doing. And also Crest is a coalition of governments of which we're a member of. So it's not like we paid some big thing for that. So.
This, this was done at the time by the, the planning department to see where alignment for code should be, but it wasn't brought and presented to the commission as these are the things you should adopt. So they were looking at what they should review and what they brought to this to the commission was actually ordinance and not this. So just so we're clear.
With respect, we don't want to get hung up on background because we only have an hour to do this.
Why does it have context so that we know what should be in the ordinance or not? Yeah.
Move forward.
Good question. So, yeah.
So go next slide. So AKS, we kind of dug into a little bit, like I said, from an engineer's perspective, kind of a real world application perspective. Obviously, you know, the bullet points that are up there, obviously we looked at it from all those perspectives. So we looked at from a grading designation kind of volume basis. You know, how it impacts flood hazard, erosion control, slopes and setbacks, stormwater. And then obviously look for, you know, from the permitting perspective with respect to site development or subdivisions or public works improvements. And so they kind of went through all those things, items. And so as you move forward, I'm going to kind of step through each one of those little kind of bullet points and what we did in our review. So next slide please. So obviously the first and easiest thing, like Esther said, is, you know, some of the volume constraints we had, you know, we saw that basically your current code had 5,000 yards as a threshold. And so we just took a quick and dirty look at like, okay, if we do that 5,000 yards, how does it equate to how much fill is on a typical city lot? So obviously you have three zones that range from a 5,000 square foot lot up to a 40,000 square foot lot. And so you can see, you know, 5,000 square, 5,000 yards of material on a 40,000 square foot lot is only is 3.4 feet. Well, it's 27 feet tall on a 5,000. Obviously that's not realistic and things like that. So that was just more, this is more kind of anecdotal type. How does that yardage impact a lot and what would it typically do across the city? So obviously it's not until you get down to those lower 50 yard threshold to where it's like, okay, we got volumes that are barely noticeable. They're small. They may still have impacts, but they're, you know, they're less than a foot. So just kind of a quick and dirty kind of anecdotal kind of approach to looking at from a volume basis. So there's more questions, we'll move to the next slide. So out of this essentially kind of the recommendations that we came out of there is basically kind of remove, you know, stockpiling was one of those things that we kind of felt that it's like people stockpiling dirt when there's no purpose. A lot of times it's causing problems. And so we kind of said, recommend remove that from that exempt definition within your code. So it basically takes that out. The 50 yard volume is, as you see, as we move through this presentation, there's several instances where that 50 yards seems like it's a, it's a kind of a nice volume because I mean, it shows basically you're not having impact. Or you don't trigger permit requirements, or there's a variety of things that that volume comes. And so but we still want to basically say, okay, it's not going to be just volume based. And that last one says, basically it can be revised more to where potential impacts are impacted. And so it can't just rely totally in a volume. So I think that's one of the kind of the takeaway from that kind of analysis with respect to grading. So.
You explain some, I, this is not my topic at all. But so we're talking about stockpiling. That's someone emptying a truck and leaving it there, not doing anything with it, correct?
They actually unload it.
Yeah, just unloading it.
So they'll take it and dump the truck.
Leaving charge. Yeah, either way. What is the difference between that and let's say a site in which they're, they unload dirt and then it sits there for months while they're testing it for.
That'd be surcharge. That'd be same as stockpile. So if, if the difference between stockpiling and fill is fill is permanent, whereas stockpiling is temporary.
No, no, I understand. But I've also seen where they take, and a good example of this is where Robby's is at today. They put piles of dirt, they sat there for months and then they came later and they said they were, the reason they were there for so long, and maybe I'm wrong. They said is because they were testing the, the land underneath it to make sure.
Well, you're probably describing, I don't know specifically what you're describing, but there's, they have a kind of surcharge situation where essentially it's more, if it's an improvement that they're doing, it's a temporary stockpile that they bring in, they load up the soil. So it basically experiences the weight of that additional soil, it compresses it, it densifies it so that when they take that stockpile off and they put a building or parking lot or whatever they construct, you're, you're not going to see settlement and damage, things like that. So it's kind of like, it's an engineered way of fill to basically place and mitigate it. Cause otherwise on a lot of those sites, you'd have to go with deep foundations or things like that that are, can be more expensive, whereas.
Mine is to just, is just unload and leave and the others do a test on the ground density.
Well, stockpiling is just, I think you put it correctly. It's just a temporary thing. And it can be, sometimes it can be for mining purposes. Sometime it can be for engineered purposes to support a building. You know, there's a whole reason that people would stockpile. Some type of, sometimes just people, it's like, I don't have anywhere to put this. This contractor says, I don't have, it didn't get dumped at the site, so I'm just going to dump it in my yard here and then I'll pick it up later and move it. Well, that's a stockpile. So, and I think the exemption that we.
Whatever they're doing, it's still a stockpile regardless.
So the way the city code had it, just still has it, is that stockpiling slash surcharging. If you're, if you're stockpiling something, it's not technically fill, so to speak, because the idea is that you'd be using it somewhere else. It wouldn't stay there permanently. Same with surcharging is you're pressing down the earth to get it to go flat and you take it off with the building on it. The problem is some people will use that loophole and say, well, I'm just stockpiling and then let it sit. And then eventually, once everything's going on, then they're going to try and get a fill permit or.
Now I've actually seen a bet, I saw a construction person who had a property next to the library in Hammond. And over years, he would bring loads in and loads in and loads in. Well, he increased that property about two foot in depth and then the library flooded. And then he built his homes there. But he did it over a period of years. So there was never any permit needed. No one ever realized that property was gaining depth. And that's what I see could happen with stockpiling over time, I guess.
Yeah. So it's basically three different issues. You're correct. Stockpiling can be an issue because they may claim it's temporary and it's not surcharging. You know, the intent of course is to kind of compress the dirt, but what if they never take it off again? That's why we're saying it shouldn't, we should, we should make sure that there's some oversight. And then the third one is, you know, they do this where they sneak it in over time and it's just under the threshold. So this is where our current code has these issues.
Thank you.
Next slide. So flood hazards is pretty simple. Obviously, you know, your city, you have a lot of land that's in the hundred year floodplain zone and essentially, you know, any, any fill that's placed beneath that flood, that base flood elevation basically has floodplain impacts and causes flooding with the hundred year storm event in other areas. And so it's pretty easy. You know, obviously anytime you do any fill placement and it's in a floodplain, it's obviously, you know, our kind of recommendation would be you move forward straight with, it's an engineered grading permit because you're basically going to automatically impact somebody because you're placing fill. And that aligns very well with kind of state and federal FEMA rules, where essentially it says, if you place fill in floodplain, you got to basically, you know, and it needs to be addressed and mitigated and, and make sure it's not going to cause more problems because essentially that's the whole reason that FEMA and their flood insurance is in existence. So pretty simple. So next slide. Natural resources. So obviously, you know, you also are blessed here in Warrenton with a lot of wetlands and natural resources and beautiful land. And so I think, you know, we basically want to protect those. And obviously, you know, Oregon fill removal laws basically say any fills within wetlands are limited to 50 cubic yards and a tenth of an acre. So obviously, you know, any type of you fills that you place in a wetland, obviously you're going to kind of trigger and require you to basically get a grading permit and be evaluated and things like that. Obviously, any projects that do not impact wetlands and waters can be reviewed and they can meet the requirements for regular grading. So obviously, you know, the city has maps and so those are pretty easy to see. And obviously they're, they're actually included as an exhibit. In our kind of a report to basically shows those extents of those natural resources that are actually currently met. So next slide. And this is a exhibit two is that exhibit I was referencing. So you can see there's a lot of hatch barriers across the city. You know, basically it's like, if you're in all those areas, you gotta look at it from an engineering grading perspective and say, okay, how are we impacting those natural resources? So next slide. Erosion control. From a grading perspective, obviously erosion control, they kind of go hand in hand. Obviously you can have erosion control permits. You're going to have impacts to erosion basically when you do any grading and move dirt. Generally, I mean, you already have code as at the local level as well as the state level with respect to D E Q 1200C permits. Basically any development that requires, that disturbs over an acre is going to require a 1200C permit from the state.
Is that the picture from Juniper? You're laughing because I think it is. Okay. Well, I just says recommendations none. And for that picture, I'm thinking, well, something should have prevented that from happening. So.
Yeah. So obviously, I mean, but I think it's the current, you know, kind of from a perspective erosion control, you already have the authorities and things like that in place to kind of protect them. And you just kind of continue with those processes.
I don't know if that's Juniper, but it's very similar to what's occurring at Juniper. Yeah.
Slope setbacks. Obviously, the photo that's on the screen obviously is from the Oregon structural specialty code. So obviously in your own, you know, the code, whether it's a state code or local code, you basically have those kind of mechanisms that require those minimum requirements with respect to slopes and setbacks and things like that. I think regardless of whether it's an engineered or a regular grading, it doesn't really have any impact on slopes and setbacks. It's just something you already have code that basically addresses it. We don't really need to revise anything like that. So next slide. Storm drainage. So obviously, as Esther mentioned earlier, you know, kind of this kind of started the whole process is some complaints about storm drainage. You know, I will say storm drainage is different. But you know, I, I've, you know, storm is basically any rainfall event and you're going to have runoff coming from an impervious surface. And so whether it's a light, I mean, here in the Oregon coast, you get a lot of rain. So we know we're going to have runoff, you know, significant amount of the year running onto other properties. And so it was obviously, and when Esther reached out to me, you know, she kind of gave us some kind of known areas that basically people flagged it. And so we kind of said, okay, let's look at that. And we basically kind of created exhibit basically that says, okay, these are known areas that have been flagged in the city of known storm drainage issues. That basically if you are developing in one of these areas, it's going to automatically flag an engineering grading permit and review. So it's not going to say you're not grading, you just need to look at it and basically evaluate it. So there's the picture on the right is kind of the picture of the exhibit that's included in the, in our report. So.
I'm surprised that seventh, the whole entirety of seventh wasn't included in Hammond. That's a, that's literally you can kayak down it during really bad storms.
That one, we don't get as many complaints from the neighbors though, as far as flooding in their, their homes itself. I think it's more the street.
There's four or five homes that turn into lakes real quick.
It's interesting though, they don't complain based on neighbors in fill type.
True, but there's not been a lot of, yeah.
Yeah. And I think that's part of what we looked at as, so this was a staffer created, created report of known flooding issues that are triggered by infill.
Yeah, no, okay.
Yeah.
So I think, and I think the way I would view this exhibit is essentially it's something that should be dynamic. Like you said, obviously you're going to have things that pop up and say, hey, you know, all of a sudden, you know, we're getting flooding issues in this part of the city and this map can be updated and kind of reflect that and say, okay, we had another issue in another area. So that's dynamic and it can change and evolve.
Excellent.
Okay, next slide. Obviously, site development, public improvement permits for most part, I mean, it's pretty, I mean, generally these sites have a lot of earthwork and a lot of grading that goes with them. So it's kind of automatically triggered. They go to straight to grading, you know, engineer grading permits and they have engineering review. A lot of, a lot of people are looking at these already. So there's really no recommendations. Just continue to kind of implement your processes and reviews for these large developments and things like that. I mean, obviously it is a slide there, a fourth point, you know, that's going to significant project that's going to do a lot of grading. So it's, it's going to automatically have an engineer grading permit. So next slide. Did I miss a slide?
No, that's right. Sure. That's right.
So, so this is a kind of a quick and dirty, what I did a comparison of basically, you know, what's currently allowed under the current code and did a comparison of, you know, okay, does it, regular grading permits? And then how do they harm neighbors and how do they align with or violate, you know, Oregon and federal law? And then should grading permits, is that probably the big column on the far right is basically the one that's like, when should grading permits be required due to impacts? And so obviously you can see, you know, we kind of stepped through each one of the ways that we looked at this, whether it's grading volumes, flood hazards. And you can see here it says, yes, yes, you know, and then we have a you know, so for the most part, any of those things, the most of them are basically saying yes. So but like erosion control and great slope and setbacks, you know, those are basically no's when you have less than an acre. So it's basically, if you have small projects, you don't have to go with an engineer grading permit, but, but your current code kind of already addresses those kind of requirements and they don't really differentiate between grading and regular grading with those respect to those items. So that's kind of all I have of that. If you have any questions on that one.
I know you put on there a recommendation for if greater than one foot in depth and you're kind of running off of that. I can understand why that's kind of an easy way to, you know, plug that number in. Although one foot can make a big difference in some of the already known flood prone areas. There was a discussion, it happened multiple times, both during applications for fill and development permits, as well as during the fill discussions that have happened over the last five years about having some sort of variance process, particularly instead of one foot common elevation. So for example, say, for example, you have two properties, right? And you have a house that's built here, house built there, and then you have a house right here. And there's a storm system runs back. You know, a ditch. If, does it make really truly sense to engineer having the person fill to the common elevation? If it doesn't change outside, I mean, obviously it will fill a hole that's already currently there. But in terms of infrastructure, you have a stormwater system on the back. Why would you require someone to engineer to fill the common elevation? It makes sense if they're trying to elevate above everybody, but why would you require if it had to do common elevation above one foot? That just doesn't make, that seems like a lot of wasted money.
Right. And I think that the only, with common elevation, what you're describing, if I understand correctly, no, correct me wrong. I mean, if you have two properties and they are both currently at the same common elevation, but you can have a scenario where it's like, currently they both slope towards each other. Property B goes in there, he fills up and he places less than a foot. But then he redirects the water, you know, basically away from his neighbor. His neighbor is going to be in favor of it. Whereas, okay, then we got property where it's like, okay, they both sloped to the street. They don't slope to each other. They slope to the street. He fills up less than a foot, but he fills the right side of his loft, directs it to the left side towards his neighbor. Still common elevation, still similar elevations. And so it gets very challenging to kind of describe that. And I think my recommendation is not so much volume based, it should be volume and impact. So it's like volume is one, is foot level would be like the bare minimum that you start looking at it. And then it's like, or do we have storm drainage impacts? And I think with the process that we're trying to identify is like, you know, the building official, order and designee is going to take a look at it and go, okay, I'm comfortable making that call that, okay, one foot or less, I'm not changing too much. It looks like the drainage or I'm not comfortable. And then he'll bring in somebody else that can make that evaluation.
So and maybe you've answered that with your, with your statement about volume and impact, but in some of the cases in which we've had fill, engineers have stamped plans that anybody in public works or on the commission would have told you, that wasn't going to work. It just wasn't, you know, because they said, well, there's that there and here's the numbers on, you know, runoff coefficient. So of course it'll go in, it'll be fine. When we're like, that's already an overburdened, you know, storm system. It's in an urban area. There's no, no way to get that water anywhere. That's what happens down the road. So then at that point, do we just continue to allow the problem to consist? Or is there a way to say, hey, within your suggested, can the public works director, public or building official basically say, hey, we know that there's a problem area? And unfortunately, either that's going to require stormwater updates on your part, or we're going to have to do that. We're going to have to wait until the CIP clears it out. I mean, our ditches are still pretty, I mean, we've got all the trees growing in some of our ditches. So.
So this process, I think, speaks a little differently than what you described because you're describing a developer's engineer or an outside engineer. We're talking about our engineer, the city's engineer reviewing and say, there's a troubled area.
See, but that's, okay, that's one thing. That's one thing to identify trouble areas. But what I don't like is you have a property owner go and pay for an engineer who stamps it. On that point, technically all liability should be on that stamp. But there's oftentimes where the city likes to review things too. And then we get into these fights between engineers. And it's kind of like, well, at some point, I mean, I understand what we're trying to do. We're trying to we're trying to make sure that, you know, everything's done well, but the problem is, is at what point is the stamp worth something? And at what point is the property owner and the city just wasting money on engineers? That's what I'm trying, not that I have anything against engineers. But as you can understand, things are just getting more expensive. So I'm just trying to figure out, is there a common sense way to avoid additional costs without having to sacrifice livability?
I think what we're trying to do with that in this code change is to say, there is a reasonable level. Like, you know, you come in with your engineer and you say it's stamped and it's at this level. We look at it and we say, we agree, that's not a problem. But the, we have some known ones. I mean, we have one right now where the slope and erosion is not up to city standards and neighbors are complaining. And we are saying our engineer does not agree with your engineer on this because here's the grade, here's the slope that's required. Now you could say, well, that's petty and you're going back and forth, but at the. Now you could say, well, that's petty and you're going back and forth, but at the end of the day, it's not benefiting the neighbors and also future development to let that engineer stamp. Ride because it is not up to standards.
Did our engineer catch bad math on the other engineer? Or is that something where say, you know, Mr. Gorman basically saw, you know, we've experienced that in the winter. It's a terrible drainage. We know it's a bad drainage and you know, you can throw us all the numbers you want. That's just not going to work because that stormwater system is overburdened. What was?
They, they put it in place, but they did not prevent erosion. And so what they originally said was a correct slope is now gone. And they're arguing it's still sufficient and it is not. It is, and some places sheer it off and there's no slope there.
So here's another question about Phil. Um, well, some places like to do crushed concrete gravel, you know, which is a permeable surface in a way. Um, what's your take on that? And compared to other fills, because most of the time you're seeing fills in the city, people throwing sand.
Crushed, I mean, essentially you do crush gravel, sand mining, anything where you're doing, you know, kind of something that's going to be, that's basically regulated by the gammy. So essentially if you're crushing and you're basically mining materials.
No, 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 no.
Or crushing materials.
I'm not trying to talk about the gummy. I'm trying to talk about.
The types of materials brought in?
Say, for example, somebody's got to build a driveway. There's some, some like the Hammond district that have some pretty long driveways, right? Um, and say a person is. Got to build a road, but he's going to build, it's a private road or it's underneath our threshold for paving. So. He's going to build a gravel driveway. So he's got to, but he's got to elevate it because it's kind of in a swampy area, right? So he's elevating it. Um, would you then trigger if it was over a foot in depth or just in general, under 5,000 cubic yards? Uh, engineered grading plans for filling gravel?
If it, so that's the, if it's an impact essentially, because essentially if you're filling, for one thing, if you're filling a low area and warranting, odds are it's a natural resource, right?
No, because all of the warrants is pretty much underneath the sea level. So.
Right. So it's pretty much, yeah. So it's, it's pretty much an absolute resource. So, and I think, you know, everybody thinks engineering grading permit, like in your case. That you just described. That could be as long as it's a quick check to where it's like, okay, drainage addressed. Are we not causing damage? Are we rerouting water, concentrating water on the neighbor, looking at that type of thing? And so.
But it's going to require an engineered plan. That's where I'm getting at is that cost factor. You know what I mean? It's like the guy's driving a driveway, right? So like, okay, it's going into swamp.
There, there are going to be builders that can basically come up with a plan that basically says, is not truly engineered and stamped. I don't know. I don't think we have, and you can correct me wrong Esther, but I don't think we have it in our engineer that says it has to be stamped by an engineer. Engineered is basically something that basically is enough detail that shows volumes, you know, impacts and all that kind of stuff. So. You're definitely kind of talking a gray area that, you know, I don't.
I'm thinking the constituency probably has understood it to mean an engineer itself, but you know, maybe that needs to be.
This, I think some of that gets into policy and then making this clear to staff as well to say, there is a common sense here, like what you've described. If it truly meets as the engineer is stating, truly meets these things and you say, there is no flooding issue. It is not impacting a neighbor. It is not triggering a natural resource. You would hope then in our policy it states, if the building officially designate sees this design from this builder and goes out and looks and agrees with them. Why would you then require an additional engineering? That seems excessive to me. And I think that's where the policy should clearly reflect those common sense measures.
Yeah. And I don't, I don't like the idea of just requiring engineering for things that could have, you could easily eyeball and say, that doesn't make any sense. You know, it makes sense when it's like, hey, again, you know, you're big, big development or you're going to have like a, you know, something like that. But when it comes to, or if it's in a really challenged area, but. There are some instances where it doesn't make a ton of sense to be like, oh, you need an engineered fill permit, you know, for. Dumping three trucks of gravel on your driveway.
And I mean, I don't think the code amendments are framed this way, but you could very well reconfigure it to where it's like, okay, the building official reviews. And if the building official is comfortable and he looks at, okay, that one foot and all the criteria and says, boom, boom, check them all off. I'm comfortable and it's two feet of fill. You know, he can approve the regular grading, but, uh, and so we probably have to tweak the language a little bit to allow for that. But ultimately it's going to probably come down to the comfort level of the person reviewing it to say, yeah, I'm comfortable. It's not impacting anybody and things like that. So.
And you have a list of exemptions before you and they are what staff has recommended, but that's also why we've thrown this into a work session for you as a commission to say. Well, here's a common sense exemption thing that we know should not trigger a permit and we'd like to see that as an exemption or a little better definition of what could be exempted. Those are some options you might want to think about in this, in this ordinance.
Yeah.
And trust me, it's not that we want staff to have to go out and review. Staff have also said, you know, how many times are we going out and looking at things and you know, what, what's triggering what? You know, we want this to be clear for everybody and we want it to be fair and common sense. But unfortunately it's when you've had a repeat offenders that have kind of triggered this, where is that, where does that lay?
And this is, this is where the rubs always been is how do you make it not overly cumbersome to people to be able to do simple things at the same time? Catch the people who are catching all the loopholes and making things difficult for everyone.
Yep. And that's.
And that's why we've been out with this many times.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I think I'm on the slide, right?
Tom, do you have anything that you've, uh, since we've started, is there any questions? Just noticed you joined us.
He's, I think he's.
You're muted.
Can you unmute yourself?
You're, you're muted, Tom.
He's looking.
There we go.
There we go.
Uh. There's always going to be someone that's not happy with, with what we decide on this. But we had to have a, uh. A basic. Line that we draw, uh, otherwise. There'll be too, too big a swings in the filling stuff. And there are people that take advantage of it. I've seen a lot of it. But I think this is a good step.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. We'll go on the next slide then.
So this is kind of a, kind of a quick and dirty, kind of, kind of a concept process that we're thinking, uh, talking to staff. It's like, obviously it's kind of very simple. You know, basically this grading application comes in, it's reviewed. Um, by the city, obviously the building official that does need reviews it and basically looks at it. Um, you know, their site conditions, basically, obviously we made some changes to the, uh. Grading permit application, basically that kind of allows the applicant to check off and say, okay, I am less than this, I'm less than an acre and things like that. Obviously it allows, you know, requires them to basically know what they're doing and kind of provide information to the city. And then. They basically confirm, you know, then the building official can look at basically exhibit A and determine whether, you know, that exhibit A that we created was basically is kind of a conglomerate of all the. Kind of impact areas that automatically triggered engineering, creating permit review due to flood plain impacts, natural resource impacts and known flooding areas. So. Pretty simple. Maybe, you know, so I don't, you can go more complicated, but I think it's simple. Obviously it's going to be more the building official on their. Kind of comfort level is going to kind of trigger when they pull in other people to kind of look at things. So.
And, and I will tell you, our building official and or whoever it ends up being will need more training on this, you know? My goal is not that everything become an engineering thing and we don't kick everything out for engineering just because it has to be a reasonable threshold of. The hope would be most of this, we'd be able to capture using a simple formula and say, okay, now it triggers this that is beyond this that it goes there. But, um, there is some training that needs to be done first, once we've had this kind of narrowed down to scope.
So question I guess is how do you police this?
We usually get the complaints. We usually get people complaining about flooding or, you know, trucks rolling through, or they've, they've gotten a permit. And what often happens, probably eight times out of 10, we go to inspect. The small permit and they've dumped twice as much. Instead of a foot, it's three feet and it's very obvious. We've had. Again, when we say repeat offenders, those are the ones where it's like, you said you brought in five dump trucks over the last five years. Well, tell me why on Google Earth, you know, this was down eight feet, you know, there's, there's some things that your neighbors say this used to be a hole and now it's 20 feet high. You know, there's, there's some ways that we've caught a lot of this.
So somebody, so somebody brings in what is supposedly 50 cubic feet.
That's yards, yards. Yep.
Say bring in 50 cubic feet and then they bring another 50 cubic feet. And then somebody says, okay, we caught you. And what is the penalty?
Well, the discussion back in the day was wanting to do the $1,000, you know, citation like we've done on other things and, and that could be daily. Um, usually we do a stop work order. Yeah. Usually we do a stop work order. And then there is a change or remediation required.
My concern is, is that. Uh, is that we have a tendency to be soft. Sometimes I think to a fault we are soft. If we're going to, if we're going to go through this effort, if somebody brings 50 cubic feet, we need to make sure that. And, and abuses their right that they've been given, then they need to make sure that we're not forgiving or forgetting. You know, these, these penalties because they'll just keep doing it. It, you know, they'd take it as well. It's financially, it makes more sense for me to do it this way than to do it the other way.
And that's why I'd also like to make sure going forward, tracking is, is crucial for this, that we're tracking. Well, we had a complaint in this area and it was documented at this level. Now we come back in a year, we're getting that same one. We shouldn't just be like, oh, this is a restart. We should be like, you are a chronic, you know, abuser of this type.
Wouldn't it make sense? And I know we're always short of manpower, but wouldn't it make sense if somebody gets a, a. A permit to put the 50 cubic feet on the, on the, on the, on the, on the site. That once it's been downloaded or dumped or whatever, that, uh, that, um. It has to be like going to an inspection site, you know, and somebody signs off and, and it's okay.
So all of the permits, we always do go and inspect.
So after every dump?
Uh, well, once it's been what is supposed to be the full amount. So they, and sometimes they do it throughout the process. So like if they've said, I'm going to fill 250 yards. Um, in, in my past experience, staff have gone out there originally and made sure the silt, if there's silt fencing required, that's in place. You know, they've seen where, where it should be dumped because sometimes people dump it not where they say they're going to dump it somewhere off, off site or not fully on their property. So usually staff go and inspect and then sometimes they'll go in the middle of the project or if it's a very, you know, it's, if it's just a couple. Um, dump truck loads, it's usually right, right after. Um, but staff have been doing that in the past, in recent past.
Somebody comes dumps 50 cubic feet and then somebody comes out and checks and make sure they did it properly. So if they come again. And they put another 50 cubic feet on it, we don't know about it until somebody's complained or we just happen to drive by and notice that there's an extra 50 cubic feet there.
That does happen sometimes. Yes. Usually people will complain though, because it gets to the point where it starts getting pretty obvious there's something.
But then, I guess my question then goes to. If, if the, if a second person comes and they put down their 50 cubic feet, uh, you know, does it again, now they are getting a fine up to a thousand dollars a day. But what if there's been a, a drainage and it's gone onto the property of the neighbor now because they've abused their rights? What is the penalty that makes that neighbor right?
There's none. They have to sue them in civil court.
That's, that's usually a private landowner's civil.
But see.
Yeah.
It seems to me that it's, it's not a civil matter. It's a criminal matter. Because as soon as they put that second, knowing they were had no right to do it, they've gone and intentionally broken the law. And now they've caused harm to their neighbor, which is a criminal offense.
Well, they haven't, what law would they be breaking?
I mean, the city law, they're breaking the law by.
Laid at a code. Yeah.
And dumping, uh, prop, uh, dropping something that's not going to cause damage to their neighbor's property.
Unfortunately, you usually have to prove proof of damages, which is flooding. And that again is not for the.
We've already.
Yeah.
Made, made assessment at 50 cubic feet. He's broken that by putting the what on there where, I mean, that's, he's already broken the law by doing that.
But it may or may not flood and that's the problem. You know, we don't, we can't always determine.
I don't understand. I guess I'm sorry. I guess I just, I just don't see it. I don't understand why may or may not flood, doesn't matter. It may never flood. It may be the best thing in the world, but for that, that guy. One, uh, I think it's a criminal offense, not just a civil offense for what he's done to the prop by what he's. You know, but what he's doing because he knows he wasn't allowed to do it. So therefore he's broken the law. Okay. And, and if we're going to fine them a thousand dollars a day, up to a thousand dollars a day. You know, it's like. We better make sure that one, we're doing that. And if it's done any, we, I think there should be something written, a codicil that says, if you've caused damage. To your neighbor's property and it can be proven by your neighbor, there, there should be restitution.
I'm sure we have the power to.
I'm not sure we have the power.
Which is technically not a court of record.
Yeah, that, that gets into a higher threshold of court.
Not passed in by the state, then I don't know if we can.
Yeah.
But, but I will say though is, um, my concern is, uh, kind of similar to your points is the ability to, depending on how granular you get with policy. The ability of the city to actually, uh. Enforce based on limited, you know, manpower, let alone, uh. Available resources to track. But I do think that, um, if someone does, uh. If someone does violate their, their fill permit, which does cause damages to, um. The neighbors, I mean. I, yeah, we'd have to, I don't know how we would be able to, I mean, I guess you could take the fine money and give it to the neighbors, but that's not going to do anything. So. Um, because it would be miniscule compared to what damages if you actually had damages. So, um.
I just, yeah, I, I know that from sitting on the planning commission for so many years, I've seen this, I don't know how many times. I mean, this has been an issue that we've seen. I mean, it was like a regular occurrence. People coming and dumping things and I, I was, the, the last case, big case we had, which. We all know who we're talking about is, I mean. People get away with things and then they, you know, and then nothing happens. There's, there's no penalties, just no fines. There's, you know, we sort of. Turn a blind eye and say, okay, well, don't do it again. And we can't keep doing that. I mean, the people are taking advantage of the city by think, thinking, well, who, who's going to know? And unless somebody complains, nobody's ever going to catch me.
I think we could probably compel removal, Phil.
It depends on how current it is. Unfortunately, I think sometimes, you know, if it's been there and unless you can prove the actual slope is going into. If it's, you know, decades old or years old, I'm not sure at that point we can. Um, but if it's a recent fill that has it violated, yes, we do usually require them to remove it back to what was permitted.
Well, to be fair to Commissioner Mitchell's point, I do know the specific case you're, you're referring to, they did not.
Require that.
Remove that. They were.
Yeah.
That was a different city manager at a different time, but.
There's also one on warranty drive that was filled excessively and they never moved any of that down by the Y on the right.
Do you want to go to the key recommended changes?
Almost to the rooftop of the neighboring house.
Oh yeah. You're talking on harbor.
Yeah, on harbor. Yeah. And it was never.
That was surcharge.
It was surcharge. It was never removed.
It was, yeah, surcharge, permanent surcharge.
I, I want to make sure the commission does see the next slide because it is the key recommended changes. Oh, next.
So obviously this is, this is kind of the quick exhibit. Basically it's exhibit A that basically kind of identifies all the areas that would automatically trigger. An engineered review of, you know, grading and fills within the city. Obviously it comprises a large portion of the cities, but. And the exhibit that we created that's kind of combines all the kind of various areas that, uh, could impact neighbors and things like that. So next slide. Um, obviously kind of the final and then bullet number three there is obviously so, you know, less than 50 cubic yard, you know, it doesn't say just. One foot, it's got less than 50 cubic yard, less than one foot of fill, drainage paths are not changed, property is situated outside these hashed areas. You know, the building official can basically move forward automatically with that permit. So obviously, um, if less than one foot of fill and, and any of the other site conditions are checked, obviously it's forwarded off for an engineering grade review. So kind of takes that, you know, obviously, you know. Gives them two avenues basically for that great review. So. And that bullet point, I think kind of maybe number three kind of addresses some of those, it's not just volume base, it's multiple impacts that we're kind of looking at. From the building official's perspective or his designated. So. Okay, next slide.
Um, I have one question.
Okay, sure.
If it's less than one foot, do you need the engineering or?
No.
More than one foot?
It's more than one foot.
It says less than one foot, if less than. So I don't know if that's a typo or. On number four.
Uh, well, that's the, that's the review. So if it's. The building official moves forward with it.
Yep.
Yeah. If the wording is, is a little confusing. It's not saying it's engineered. It's saying it's been reviewed. Yeah. Sorry. Yeah.
And so obviously we kind of took. You know, we're going to say you kind of took the current code and kind of did track changes code and lined everything out, what we're changing and recommendations. Uh, I didn't want to put it up on the slide because it's way to have too much to have up there. So.
Is that the red lines on, uh, the 1274? Is that the red lines on uh the twelve seventy-four that was included in the Dropbox? Recommended code now, not the current one that was recommended in twenty twenty, right?
So we are taking the current ordinance and comparing that with what the staff is recommending now.
Because I I see red lines on that one, some add-ins, and then I think on his report, I see simply uh after his presentation, so there's two different files. One's got the red, the red lines only. And then it's got quite a few on there. And then the next one is in your presentation, probably in that same file. There is an ordinance with uh basically just one section, which is the exemptions that is redlined.
So one is just showing the code and one is showing the ordinance is what should be in the Dropbox if we sent you the correct files. One showed the track changes um in the code. So it had the cross-throughs and new was green, cross-through and was red. And then the ordinance itself, I think, was a showing the changes between what what had been what is current and then what we would like to go to.
I would recommend that staff provide um a, because there's no green in mine, it's like maroon and bright red and.
And my colors may show differently than yours, sorry.
Yeah, so I would I would recommend that a uh red lines and a clean copy of the new proposed ones be submitted to the city commission into the Dropbox at some point. And make sure that those are separate files so that and clearly labeled what they are.
Okay, usually you just want the track changes, but we can definitely do.
Well, since we're dealing with prior ordinances that we can dispose of and, you know.
Well, this should not be any of the prior discussions. This should be only what is currently being recommended and the current ordinance and code.
Okay, well, there's three different colors, like different colors and they're not.
Okay. Yeah, we can definitely do it as clean copy for sure.
Well, I mean, I'm fine with red lines, I just. I want to know.
I'm clear.
I I can't figure which colors what.
Yeah. So obviously, we're not going line by line through the ordinance today. We do not have that time. Um, what we wanted to kind of encapsulate is where we're at and then see if possibly, while we have the engineer, if you'd like more discussion with him. But if you'd like this brought back as a discussion item, and again, it could be with a clean copy of the ordinance or what have you. But if there are other things you would like to see addressed in that, you know, now is a good time to mention that. Um, I think you'd mentioned a couple of things already. Um, so if those are things you want us to further address, um, it's exactly why we have a work session, so.
This doesn't affect any way about the buyout.
So we already mentioned about FEMA or the floodplain, and we know that the floodplain will be double soon. The two point O maps will get bigger. Um, FEMA buyout, what that will trigger is probably additional requirements in the certain zones. Um, and so that will add another layer. Um, and so um, some of that is under the definition of natural resources, so that, yeah, will fall under that type of criteria.
I don't, I think you might be minimizing the impacts, the manager, uh, the FEMA buyout will essentially make this whole, this headache look look minor, because you're gonna be doing compensatory fill. And then you're gonna be doing mitigation by taking out, so you're not only putting in fill, you're also removing to meet flood code to get elevation. So um, yeah, it's uh this, this could be really interesting, I guess you could say, once the buyout goes, because a lot of these properties that you think are currently taken good won't be anymore.
Right.
So if they're gonna, this isn't the new map, then Exhibit One FEMA Flood Hazard.
That's the current, but it is not the new web uh point O maps.
Oh, you do.
Because those have not been put into effect yet. The engineer was only working off what is currently implemented, not the the future ones we know are.
Yeah, I think I did that report back in two thousand twenty-four, so, yeah, it was over a year, almost a year ago.
And there's many things that can hopefully change, and I'm gonna try to be optimistic and say that maybe those maps could get rolled back, but
Yeah.
It's kind of a losing battle, so.
Okay.
All right, well, yeah, I would say that um a discussion I was fine, I would give it um give it a month or two.
Maybe bring this back in October.
Back some of that information and and work it. Um, but some things that I think that really need to be addressed is common elevation. And I think I I do like this, the statement you made about it's not just volume but impact. So, you know, I guess your first trigger is volume, all right. Normally, you would need a permit. Is the impact minor or no, you know, okay, maybe you don't need to go engineered level, you can just give us a grading plan that's your contractor's drawing up or something like that. Um, and but if not, you know, maybe you go there and it's like, man, there's houses everywhere and you're gonna really create a havoc in this neighborhood. Now you have to create something much more stringent engineered.
I I will say staff would probably struggle with the challenge of how to implement a common elevation. Um, because what defines that? If somebody says, well, my house that was built in the nineties should be the common elevation.
No, 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 common elevation would be defined as, uh, we discussed on the Wright's hardship amendment. Um, common elevation basically be, if you look at the neighborhood which is being built in, what is, you know, basically, what's the lowest property on that? That's that's inhabited basically on that area. So if you have four house, five houses in the neighborhood and you're gonna build a lot here, what is the lowest property that's currently existing? That becomes your common elevation, so to speak, is you don't want to be displacing. But if you build to that level, he was gonna build on stick pilings, I think it was, to get around that issue. So, I don't know, does that make, I mean, is it tracking?
Yeah, I get what you're saying, because you're basically kind of identifying the worst, the worst property that's gonna get the worst impact due to this fill.
And make that the common.
Yep, and make that shows like you're setting the bar high to say, hey, this guy's lowest. You impact him, you impact everybody, so you gotta, you know, so, yeah, I can.
So maybe more of like a lowest point impact in the neighborhood.
Well, I'm afraid to say lowest. Yeah, I mean, however you want to define it, but I would just say is that um, there are some properties that just never will develop. And so for whatever reasons, because of how they're, you know, maybe they are super wetlanded up. Um, and so I would just suggest that it's not necessarily, that your common elevation is based on what is already developed versus you know, the duck pond and the other, you know, second lot down the road.
Yeah.
And I heard from Commissioner Mitchell, you know, what kind of are the restitutions or some of those unfortunately we can't do, and we can't do the full extent of the law as much as we'd like to, but what are our citations and recourse? Should there be problems such as far as removal of excess and those type of?
To Commissioner Mitchell's point, though, I would like Legals weighing, I would like an opinion from Legal uh weighing in on what is our maximum or maximum timeframe and authority to enforce? Um, obviously, there's data that we have related to elevations in the city, mostly from FEMA. Um, so, I mean, if something's two feet off and you can't tell, you should be able to look at it, look at the elevation and ostensibly be able to determine that. But usually, I would say that the time horizon is probably gonna be about a year.
I would guess it's around a year.
I think it's gonna have time to get a rainy season for someone to be noticing.
Yeah.
Well, and in this day and age with Google Earth, it's kind of, you can almost see, I mean, things just, because they're taking them every year, you know, in a lot of most cities, and so definitely you can, you know, so you can see those impacts, so.
Yeah.
So I don't think I've heard Commissioner Mitchell or Commissioner Poe or Dyer's um feedback that they need taken from this. Do you have anything to add?
Um, not really anything to add. I like the common elevation point. Because myself, I've experienced that where I have ponding in my yard, they were gonna do a development next to me and blacktop the whole thing and pump all the water down underneath it. And it was gonna be quite a bit higher than me. I already had ponding and it's sand, so I understand that common elevation is pretty important. Um, I think the penalties for uh going past the fifty yard mark and doing it blatantly should be.
Whatever the permit is, if they're going in next time.
Yeah, well, it doesn't have to be permitted, I guess, if it's under fifty, right, or it doesn't need engineering.
Yeah.
But I think that should be as uh comment or as Paul says, uh we should find a way to be a little more punitive, a little uh stronger with those penalties. Because it's just a kind of open season as I've seen it over the years, so I agree with that, too.
I agree with what was said, and then I always just um go back to the implementation and the um enforcement piece. Making sure that it's clear, so developers and builders know exactly what the expectations are and there's no gray zone. And then when it comes to our side, like how we actually enforce it, so.
Mr. Dyer?
I would agree with Poe, uh, the common elevation. And I think we're going in the right direction for what we have to do.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will probably bring this back in October. I don't think we got to every single slide. I think you have a thank you slide.
This is just kind of the quick and dirty code. We kind of went through this, we can probably skip this one. So this kind of final slide, I know you guys on the coast see lots of big fish, so I figured I'd kind of go the other way and show you my kids' little fish that we catch here on the Oregon coast.
Hey, I'm sorry, flounder, goodie.
Yeah, so.
Fucking flounder, yes, indeed, indeed.
But so thank you very much. And then, you know, the final slide is, like, any final questions while you have me, so.
Now, we're
And I don't know if staff had anything they wanted.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Well, we're gonna close the um work session. Does anybody need a quick break before we hit into the regular meeting? Okay, we'll take a um a short, like.
Out to all of them and explain, you know, this is what we need. It does not have to be a sticker. Here's your other options besides a sticker. If the main complaint is about a sticker, well, you have the little placards you put in the front of your cart and attach, you put things under the handlebar, or you actually put on the cart itself, the name. Do the same thing with this information.
Sure. Okay. Um, I mean, I think three to six months is a reasonable timeframe to do that. I mean, you're buying stickers and a couple metal signs, so um any questions or comments from the commission?
I think three to six is fine, too.
Yeah. Mr. Dyer?
I think six months would be fine.
Okay. All right, um well, we have the uh ordinance for second reading in front of us. Is there a motion to conduct the second reading by title only of ordinance number twelve ninety-five?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moving in seconded, Poe, Mitchell, to conduct the second reading by title only of ordinance number twelve ninety-five. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries ordinance for twelve ninety-five introduced by all commissioners and ordinance adding chapter five point one six shopping carts to the Warranton Municipal Code. All right, do we have a motion to adopt ordinance number twelve ninety-five?
So moved.
Moved. To second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, um, uh, Salacio, I'm gonna go dire just for the uh, for the, for the delay there. Um, and then um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries unanimously to adopt ordinance number twelve ninety-five. All right, um, next we have on the agenda setting public hearing date for amending ordinance number twelve seventeen.
That would be Jeff, not Kevin.
Sure, it's not a takeover by Public Works.
Yeah.
Who in who who coming around?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission. Um, you have a staff report in front of you, um, but for the member, for the benefit of our viewing audience. Um, on February of in twenty eighteen, the Warren City Commission approved ordinance twelve seventeen, which vacated certain streets um located in a subdivision that was um approved many years ago. And uh, they wanted to vacate these streets so they can build a shopping center. The um streets, the vacation took place, but it did not fully discharge drainage ditches, um easements, utilities and that sort of thing. And so we sent a um we sent a little um thing around to our staff, making sure that there weren't any utilities or ditches that needed to be um considered. And so we um wanted to vacate everything, including the the easements for this um this ordinance. And so the request is to fully vacate um to amend the ordinance to fully vacate these streets and the rights of way they're in. And so we've got a recommended um motion. And by the way, there's a change in the motion here. Um, it's I move to adopt resolution number two seven zero eight, setting six o'clock PM September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. As the time and date for a public hearing to consider amending ordinance twelve seventeen, vacating certain streets in the plat of Warranton.
Yeah, that's gonna need to be put into either writing or we're gonna have to do that, if that's gonna be the recommendation.
It's basically the the motion as written, however, we need to add
adopt.
Move to adopt resolution.
Number twenty-seven.
Twenty, to the beginning of the motion.
Move to adopt resolution number twenty-seven oh eight?
Yes, and then setting six o'clock.
Gotcha, okay.
So the rest of it is is accurate, it's just we need to adopt the resolution as well.
All right. Okay, cool. Um, and then, uh, you know, this goes back to the discussion we had last meeting. I look at this plat map and I go, who in the heck dreamed up these plats? I I really, really want to just go back in time and slap some sense into them, because, I mean, you look at it, it's got Fourteenth Street, then you have Fourteenth Place, Fifteenth Street and Fifteenth Place, and they run both east-west. Um, there's nothing special, they're the same length. Why? Um, yeah, so I also very rare for the city to um not object to vacations. So, I mean, it sounds like city staff is fully in support. Um, it does make sense considering the lots. Are there any questions of staff?
And this is no different than like when um Costco went in, we of course did not keep public infrastructure right of way within that because it is a private development. We want them to maintain within that Costco shopping area. So it makes sense for the city to vacate. So then they go in and they maintain and.
So the public's not on the hook for the infrastructure.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
And it is not unusual for the city to maintain a right of way or an easement, even though they've vacated streets if they have utilities and such in those.
Existing.
Easements, but in this case, there aren't any utilities or anything, so.
This is raw land.
Yeah. All right, well, is there any other questions to staff? If there's not, is there a motion to adopt resolution for twenty-seven oh eight, setting six uh PM September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five? As time and date for a public hearing to consider amending ordinance number twelve seventeen?
So moved, so moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded post Salacio to adopt resolution for twenty-seven oh eight, setting six PM September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five as the time and date for a public hearing to consider amending ordinance for twelve seventeen for vacating certain streets in the plat of Warranton Park and in the plat of Portsmouth, addition to Warranton and City of Warranton, Oregon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. And uh, next we've got Public Works, now you're back up.
Order.
Feel like we're gonna, no.
All right, thank you. Um, Mayor and Commissioners, good evening. I'm here before you to uh request night work on the Hammond Hammond Transmission Main Project. Uh, we are about ready to get started on work out there and we're requesting night work to stay on schedule. One of our major project risks um is funding for this project, since we're uh, we have a grant agency, Business Organ. Um, they're requesting the project be done by the end of the year. And it's a tight schedule, so the one way that we can tighten the schedule and get it done on time is to do night work. And the reason why we're we're asking for this is because the ODOT, ODOT restricts us to working on the street Monday through Thursday from eight AM to four PM. So if we did night work, we would get a ten-hour workday rather than a eight-hour workday. And we would still not have the the Friday, of course, so. Um, that'll ensure the project stays on track. Um, and with that, I'm all here for any questions.
So um, major construction is coming completed by November seventh, so this isn't talking about a week of of slowdowns and stuff like that. We're talking about uh essentially they'll be doing night work from seven PM to five AM Monday through Thursday until November seventh, conceivably, correct?
Um, I don't.
What's the time period we're talking with? How do we, how do we communicate to the constituency about what this looks like?
That is basically the work window we are requesting, I believe. Um, it could be done earlier than that, but obviously, you know, they'll we would assume that is the the timeframe we're at.
Well, we're approving something, so I would like to have it pretty specific about what we're approving.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, um, I would have to refer back to our project manager for that. Unfortunately, she's on the uh line, but I don't I didn't authorize her for overtime tonight, so um. Although this is a very important, important item, would it be appropriate to ask her to jump on?
That'd be fine and we would pay her for her time if she wants to answer that question.
Twyla, if you're not making dinner, you're welcome to jump on.
One of those times when people are not actually on. There she is. Did you hear the question, Twyla?
Feel free to put in the chat, otherwise.
Yeah, we're not hearing you, Twyla. So the question was the approximate timeframe of the work that would be done during the nighttime. Would it be up to that November deadline? And we're still not hearing you, Twyla. So if you could put it in the chat, that would be great.
Furthermore, so on Friday through Sunday, are
The work would not be done.
What do we look, are we looking at lane closures? Are we looking at, I mean, this is night work because they don't, you know, ODOT's saying that you don't perform any work, you know, from Monday through Thursday, daytime regardless of lane closures. That's how I'm reading your memo. Is that correct?
Correct. There should be, I believe, lane closures in that area that I think we might have even experienced some already for some.
Yeah, I've seen some. So this is gonna be intermittent lane closures, but nothing that's like a scheduled, like, we're not, we don't have a schedule these days.
No, no, unfortunately not.
I, I do have an update from Twyla in the chat. She did say that substantial completion will be by the November date. Traffic control is one.
One lane?
Lat, latem, I'm assuming that means lane, and we expect short closures.
So it'd be the one lane intermittent work is basically what's being described.
During the nighttime hours?
During the nighttime hours.
Okay.
So hopefully minimizing impact.
So we could expect intermittent, not constant, but intermittent one lane closures Monday through Thursday, and the evening period time, or from seven to five AM throughout until November seventh.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Twyla.
So.
Make sure.
Any questions outside that?
In these situations, do you go around and let the neighbors know what to anticipate?
I believe the contractor is responsible for that, yes.
They usually do door hangers and notify the neighbors.
What happens if the contractor doesn't do that?
We will talk to them first and make sure that they do it. It would kind of be after the fact, so.
Do we pull money back or say, hey, that was probably, you know, door-to-door or, I mean, it's minor cost, but do we, is there any punitive action or money clawback?
We have not in the past. Usually contractors do a really good job of notifying. I've only known of a couple instances where they said, hey, I got missed. And we've actually had the contractor say, no, we hung their door, maybe it blew off. So we usually have that there's a pretty good thing, but it probably wouldn't hurt to remind the contractors, we do expect them to notify the neighborhood.
Yeah.
But yeah, that is the expectation. And most contractors, especially ones that do the public work, are well aware of that requirement. But there is no punitive action for that.
Gotcha. All right. Well, is there a motion to approve North Cascade Excavations request from night work from seven PM to five AM Monday through Thursday? For the Hammond Transmission Main Project contingent upon ODOT's approval, the proposed work hours extending until November seventh, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Move seconded, Solacio Poe, to approve North Cascade Excavations request to perform night work from seven PM to five AM Monday through Thursday for the Hammond Transmission Main Project, continued on ODOT's approval, proposed work hours, and for the work to be extending up to with intermittent lane closures till November seventh, twenty twenty-five. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. All right. And then we have, next is go to the order.
Do you have a discussion item, Ada?
Oh, thank you. Here I am on the rule. That was my fault. All right. Before us, there's a memo I drafted last night related to the vacancy and appointment of a vacant commission seat. So there's been a couple processes that we've used in the past on how we're gonna do this. It's ultimately up to the commission. I will say, though, in terms of how a resignation process works, just because there has been recent actions in other cities to date that have highlighted the necessity for either signed, you know, hard copy resignation letters or emails on the public email system, something that is written and trackable for resignation to be valid and voluntary. But then after that goes, after resignation is filed with the mayor, is forwarded to the city recorder to then have a declaration of vacancy put onto the next available commission meeting agenda. After that point, the commission, the only time when the seat actually truly is vacant is when the commission declares the position vacant. I should note that in attending several different legal meetings with the League of Oregon Cities and Oregon Marriage Association, portions of our city charter relating to how to vacate a position are not legally enforceable, so just keep that in mind. So in this case, if a resignation is submitted, then the commission, the legally valid way to do that was for the commission then to declare the position vacant, at which point time that is an instant vacation of the seat. The, the, the commission member in this case, Tom, you know, who announced his intention last meeting, the timeframe that he puts on his resignation letter is the, is the timeframe in which the vacancy cannot be declared sooner than that. And then in this case, the city's charter talks about appointment. It's just a majority vote. There's a couple methods that you could use. I would say I would definitely recommend that we do the voting as similar as we do with the vice mayor in terms of, it was a rank open ballot that is read out by the clerk. And I do think that similar to what we did with Commissioner Mitchell, I think it was twenty twenty-two when you were appointed.
I was appointed in twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
In October, yes.
That, especially since this term is gonna be pretty long-term, that whatever commissioner gets on before they get seated onto the commission and sworn in, that we make a stipulation related to basic elected training. And I would probably say just for the benefit for them and for everybody involved, that they take the OGGIC ethics training too, now that that's become a much stringent law and is required by state law to be done in the first term, so. So anyone have any feelings about which method we should use for filling the seat?
Well, I, I will go, I will say that I was up once before. Twenty nineteen or twenty, the year that Mark Quealas stepped down to become, because he got elected to the as the county commission.
No, he's, twenty seventeen was when he stepped down.
Correct.
It was.
And you moved your seat to become mayor. Your seat became open.
Yeah.
And I and Mark Baldwin both applied for the seat.
Okay.
So it was, so there was four of you on at the time. And, and then when that happened, we had the community come in and speak. And we basically talked to everybody that was here. They asked questions. Then the commission asked questions. And at that time, and then afterwards, they did a ballot. The actual citizens said, this is who I'd like to see. And then the commission then made a decision. Now, at that particular meeting, it was a split. I won the popular vote or whatever from the community, but the commission voted split because of manpower issues. They were afraid I couldn't be on the planning commission. So it was split. And we said, well, let's go back and reexamine this in another thirty days. And we'll, we'll, we'll think about it. And I stepped aside and I says, we can't afford to be set aside for another thirty days. So Mark took the seat, which is great. I recommend that we consider doing the same thing. I want to see the citizens be able to come to a meeting and be able to say, these are the people who want to be interested and have a chance to meet them, talk to them. You know, have them voice their opinion of who they would like to see, and then have the candidates come forward before us and, and, you know, and say, this is what I, this is what I stand for, and this is what I think, this is what I should do. And then a decision made. And now I, I don't agree that we necessarily have to vote in the people, just because the people who were there does not make up the majority of the community. But I think it gives us a good insight to sort of what people think. But I think the idea of having it more open and, and all, and.
Are you suggesting method one for applications closed? A one-hour town hall is held during or before the commission meeting for public questions to candidates. We can ask a follow-up question, deliberate vote?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I, I'm in favor of the same process. I'm I think if people want to, you know, make a statement about, you know, if they prefer a candidate or not, I think that's fine. I would be cognitive of not necessarily calling it a vote because it's not technically a plebiscite, so to speak, but, but I do think also it would be very valuable to do that. That was similar to what they did when the mayoral appointment was up as well, is we had a town hall, for lack of a better term, where people could ask questions. So and I think also it's instructive to the commission to find out what commission, you know, what citizens are asking about as well. So I think it'd be worthwhile to do. In the past, we've done amendments in the city hall chambers because it's never really passed capacity for that, so I think that's also fine to do if we want to, so. Commissioner, Commissioner Dyke, any thoughts on that?
I would agree with what he said. I think it's important to get the input. I probably have one or two people that I might suggest. Hopefully, might want to take that helm. But I think it needs to be heard out by the people. So we have the support and the community feels they're part of the situation.
Sure, absolutely. So is there any objections to method one being our, our, our policy?
I like the idea.
All right. That disposes of that questions and we'll move on to go to the order. So let's start with you, Commissioner Mitchell.
I was really excited to, to attend the, the ground break or the ribbon cutting of the Community Garden. I don't, you'll see me out there anytime soon because I was born with many, many brown thumbs, but it was nice to attend.
Thank you for coming.
Yes.
Yeah, and a plug for the seed library at the library. For anyone that's doing the community garden, the library offers free seeds. And speaking of the library, I just want to thank staff. Today they had a reading from someone at the governor's office and my childcare was closed today and I had nothing to do with my children. So it's so nice having a community resource like that to get them out of the house. And just want to thank staff for coordinating. And I just want to encourage everyone that has a small child to sign up for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. It is a free program. Everyone in the county qualifies and they now have bilingual books. So it's a great resource for, for increasing accessibility and literacy. And then last week I went to the Cedar Big Bash for Small Businesses and it was great to see two of the four businesses on the panel from Warrenson. Crystal Green from Arnie's was there and then Nicole Beyond from Flock and Lark and also on the Planning Commission was there. And it was just a great turnout and a lot of energy for our community. And again, would encourage anyone that is interested in starting a small business to reach out to Cedar and the SBDC because we have a ton of knowledge in this community and could always use, you know, some more businesses, so. That's all I've got.
Just happy to see that fishing game opened up to king salmon fishing or didn't close it, but opened it up to keep a wild fish for the holiday weekend because usually on the twenty-fifth, they shut down the king fishing and everybody leaves. And so it was nice that this hasn't happened in a long time, that they turned it around, did it the other way, and everybody can be here for the holiday weekend and catch a wild fish as well as hatchery. You can't keep a hatchery coho, but you can keep a hatchery or a wild king salmon this weekend. And that's just something that I haven't seen for a long time at this time of the summer.
Can I add one more thing? Just a question to the chief real quick. I noticed, you know, we have the signs that says, no, no passing anything from the vehicles. And I'm curious. I've noticed more people on this, on the corners lately. Matter of fact, the other day, I saw this guy in a chair that looked like he had an umbrella over the top. I mean, he was comfortable.
Yeah, I saw him.
I mean, he was, he was out there and a couple people stopped and I'm like, are we policing that? I mean, are, are, how do we?
If we're in the area and see it happen, we, we make traffic stops and go back and talk to the, we get lots of calls from people that say, same thing you said. How can they sit underneath the sign and be there? Well, the ordinance doesn't prohibit them from being under the sign. It prohibits them from receiving or transferring items back and forth. And yes, it is hard to catch. We haven't done promoted or done any type of extra enforcement on that or anything like that. It's just, it's hard. But it is the season too for, as soon as the rainy weather comes back, our population, transient population will diminish. And a lot of the people who are out there are not from the area. They're either new or passing through.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you.
Yep.
I noticed some sitting too, but I didn't see anybody walking into the street. They were just sitting. So, and like you say, there's, there's no law. It's just sitting there with the sign.
People get very frustrated because they're like, they're under the sign, they need to be arrested and. Not the way the ordinance would.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They actually have to go out and get something.
Commissioner Dyke?
I'd like to thank the city staff for assisting me with things when I can't be there and cognizance of my health. They came out and gave my laptop outside because someone was sick inside and I appreciate their thought, thoughts on that.
Well, thank you. Our thoughts are with you as well. I'll just note that I attended the, the garden ribbon cutting as well, which was a nice garden. And got in touch with the new superintendent for the school district. Also had a nice conversation with school member Crystal Green as well. I am kind of excited to see the, the, Warner Kids Inc. and some other of the nonprofits that surround the school to be picking up different events for the community. I think they had a little bit of limit in how much the word got out, so maybe next year it'll be bigger and better. But it was pretty cool to watch. There was seven rounds of overtime for the kickoff to settle the score on who won football between the kids. That was kind of fun to watch. But, and then there was also, I actually wasn't aware of the extent of how many dance teams we have in Warrenson. You know, you think of like, we have a cheerleader squad. There's a cheerleader squad. No, there's like multiple age group cheerleader squads and they're pretty sizable. So there's some pretty neat and fun things that are happening, school district, and I think it would be good to just have some more cross pollination between us, even though schools aren't really our thing in terms of jurisdiction. Next thing, I have a question for on, for Public Works Director. I know I'm a broken record here, potholes. You know, you'd mentioned we'd cleared, if I recall correctly, you mentioned that we had cleared all the potholes that had been noted on our directory. Or I think last meeting, was that correct?
Are you talking about overlays or no potholes?
Potholes, just potholes that we're gonna fill.
Ah, I'm not remembering this from last time.
Okay. And so I'd mentioned a pothole that had been for several months, spray painted on twelfth. And that pothole still has not been fixed, so I, I actually would prefer to know what do we have in terms of outstanding potholes that we know about? And I also think that the city staff shouldn't have to wait for a constituent to complain about a pothole to put it into our registry or whatever database you hold on to that says we have potholes. You know, I think if police run into a massive pothole somewhere and say, hey, man, that's rough, that they can communicate that to Public Works and that can get onto that system. If Public Works or the garbage drivers, you know, are driving around and they see something, that we can keep recording that. I think especially as we see ODOT go kind of in strange directions, stranger than normal. I think it's going to be more incumbent upon us to ensure that while maybe the state isn't going to be taking care of their roads potentially, that we do. Because I think it'll be all the more visible to constituents, even though we don't control our main thoroughfares, if we aren't taking care of business, so to speak, and are able to. So I'm just concerned that things are falling through the cracks because maybe they're not either considered important or because we're not communicating or cross pollinating what we need to to make sure that we accomplish those things. The only reason why I think this is an important thing for the constituency as well is because I remember, and I think you were there as well, and maybe I think Commissioner Poe too. We had a budget committee meeting one time where staff had been asking, under a previous administration, had been asking for an additional administrator in Public Works. And the budget committee at the time pulled that out of the budget and threw in another, and asked for a utility worker. And the big issue was fix the potholes first before you start asking for administrative staff. And I think the population in general is getting to a point where those things are, those kind of small things become bigger things in people's minds. So I just want to make sure that we're taking care of business that way. So I just want to make sure that we're taking care of business that way, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, and I could give a little transparency into maybe why some things have fallen through the cracks. Um, that database that you spoke of doesn't really exist in Public Works yet. Um, so that's one thing that we've uh, just starting to institute. It's a little bit of a challenge because we don't have the resources for um, like a big software program. It's basically, it's been in a Word document. Um, we've had Excel documents, I think, in the past. Um, and we're starting to utilize monday.com to make sure that things don't fall through the cracks and and we get those taken care of.
You said Monday?
Monday dot.
It's a P M. software?
Correct, yeah.
I mean, I I don't know why, why we can't just throw uh, a pin on a Google map and a saved map, you know what I mean, so to speak, and whoever's responsible for putting the pins on and removing them knows, you know, when the project's done, so to speak. And then, of course, I just think it's important that if we're gonna, if there's a pothole that's gonna stay because we're gonna overlay that, you know, we have somewhere that, you know, if I get a call or somebody else gets a call and is like, hey, why the heck about this pothole? Someone can relay the information that in fact, yes, we have a plan for that. The reason why that's remaining is because we're gonna do a much better thing. We're gonna overlay treatment, you know, through P N P. or whatever. But um, I think uh, I think it's, it's just important that we pay attention to those small things because I think those things are the things that add up in people's minds particularly.
I agree.
We have a lot of big projects and we can't forget the small ones.
Yeah, and I'd love to maybe sit down with you and kind of explain kind of the situation that um, the way that I see things happening over there, some of the things we could continue to improve as well. Because we got a lot of pins in the map, unfortunately. It's, it's a difficult, it's a difficult uh, situation to to manage. And we've, we've done things, I think, a lot by word of mouth, through emails, and as you know, some of those fall through the cracks, and that's, that's one of the big challenges we have.
Sure. Um, and then also ditch cleaning. Um, I remember there was a plan that was supposed to be putting or being drafted. Can you remind me again when that's gonna be done?
Yeah, it's uh,
Remember?
It's on your, your commissioner goals, and it's a priority of ours as well. Um, I don't have a date for you right now as far as when we're gonna come with the the full developed plan, but I, we did dig through our records, found like an old plan that dusted it off, taken a look at it. Um, I think what the direction we're heading is to see if we could get this in the hands of a contractor to take over, um, so that they can be accountable for for getting it done.
In the meantime, what are we doing to clean ditches? Because that has been something the city has done intermittently.
Yeah, it's uh, it was done last year, I heard. Um, we, we have basically three tiers, uh, one-year, every-year cleaning, and every-two-year cleaning and every-three-year cleaning. Um, so it was done last year. Um, and this year, we haven't planned it just yet. I think we have to wait for a little bit of rain. One of, one of the issues that I've learned about our ditches here is one of the things that clogs it up the most is algae, and so we're waiting for the algae to grow so we can pick it out. Um, that usually.
So, I mean, take the algae out. Um, I mean, as I mentioned in previously in the meeting, there's some ditches that, there's alder trees that are six feet tall growing out of them.
Hmm.
Obviously, those are things we don't have to wait for algae to grow on. Um, and the bigger that they get, the harder it is going to be to remove um, without damaging the slopes or whatever that's gonna be inside those ditches. I guess my question is, I get the in, the need for planning, and I get the need for creating a plan, but at the same time, there is work that can be done. And I'm just curious if we will be doing any work where that's gonna be this year.
Okay, yeah, I could get that to you.
Okay.
Um, and then if for the the alder tree, if you have a specific location, I'll look into it. I'd like.
Sure. And um, I know Alder Creek has been an issue. Um, it's been complained about both by Commissioner Dyer as well as uh, neighbors in the neighborhood, including um, Mr. Kerr uh, related to the narrowing and the basically the slow accretion of, from down, uphill uh, fill, basically accreting into the uh, the headwaters of Alder Creek, which is causing it to basically have less storage for floodwaters and causing problems in the property owners down there. Has there been any look at Alder Creek since then, the headwaters before it gets too rainy?
I'd have to check with staff to see any records.
All right. All right, well, that's all I have for good of the order. City manager?
Yeah, um, you should notice there is a new tsunami siren mounted on top of the fire hall. It is not active yet. The wiring still needs to occur. Um, the chief, fire chief is gonna let a professional do the wiring, thankfully. Um, so you will see that, and if you'll remember, there's also going to be one at the Hammond Fire Station as well. Um, that'll be a little further along. And then also, um, thank you all for coming to the community garden. Definitely a special thank you to the um, school for letting us use that space. And then also, I wanted to mention, um, building and planning is right now doing a renovation. Um, we hope that will be done by the end of next week, and also um, we are closed Monday in observance of the holiday. Um, and then the police department also did upgrade the glass on their windows recently. It is a laminate bulletproof um, glass, so.
All right. Thank you very much. Any, anything further for the order? All right, if not, city recorder? Going once, going twice? All right, we're adjourned.